This is the March 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Chatham County Savannah Metropolitan Planning Commission.
The board consists of Mr. Dwayne Stevens, Chairman; Mr. Travis Coles, Vice Chairman; Mr. Tom Wildwoodie, Secretary; Ms. Elizabeth Epstein, Treasurer. Board members are Ms. Lorraine Bowles, Ms. Karen Jarrett, Mr. Joseph Irvine, Mr. Wayne Noah, Mr. Jeff Morticia, Mr. Cedric Coleman, Dr. Malik Watkins, Mr. Joseph Welch, Mr. Michael Kegler, and Mr. Jay Melvin. The MPC Executive Director is Melanie Wilson.
Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, everyone. I'm sorry for the delays. We had a technology issue, but we've got it resolved. The March 21st regular meeting of the Chatham County Savannah Metropolitan Planning Commission will now come to order. We will pause for our invocation and then proceed immediately into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting today. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. This we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. For staff, petitioners, and members of the public who are participating, our procedures will be as follows. The agenda is broken down into several parts. First, notices, proclamations, and acknowledgements. Next, the consent agenda, which consists of items for which the applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation, and there are no known objections. This will be followed by regular business, old business, and adjournment. For each agenda item on regular business, the staff will make a presentation. The staff presentation will be followed by a presentation by the petitioner, should they elect to do so. The petitioner will be allotted a timeframe of no more than 20 minutes. The board may then ask questions of the petitioner or staff for clarification. Afterwards, the floor will be open for public comment. If you wish to comment on the item that the board is considering at the time, members of the public that are in person must fill out a blue speaker card and give it to staff. If you are participating virtually, use the Raise Your Hand feature on your screen. Do not use the feature until the item you want to comment on is being considered. At the appropriate time, you'll be recognized, and staff will unmute your microphone at the end of your allotted time. Sorry. Staff will unmute your microphone. At the end of your allotted time, as determined by the chair, your microphone will be muted, and the chair will recognize the next speaker. The total public comment time will be equivalent to the petitioner's presentation time. Therefore, it is important that you use the Raise Your Hand feature during the hearing on that item if you want to speak on a petition. Once the floor is closed for public comment on a petition, no additional public speakers will be allowed. If you are not certain you want to speak, still use the Raise Your Hand feature, or if in person, fill out the blue speaker card. You will have the option to decline when your name is called. After public comment, the petitioner will have the opportunity for rebuttal and then additional needed questions by the board. Finally, the board will take action. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Noah motion to approve.
Why would he second?
Thank you, and we will do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next, we have notices, proclamations, and acknowledgements. The notices are: Today's March 21st, 2023 Personnel Committee meeting occurred at 11:00 a.m. in the Jerrycerency Conference Room. We also had the Personnel Committee meeting this morning. No votes were taken. Everything was fine. We will return with a budget recommendation at the next meeting. Next, we have items requested to be removed from the final agenda. Number four, rezoning map amendment. That's item number 22-004383-ZA, Albion Street, special use permit for place of worship. We have item number five, zoning text amendment, accessory dwelling units, item 22-005883. Number six, map amendment 343 Burkehalter Road, rezoned from RACO to IL, and that's 23-000304-ZA. Number seven is a special use, 312 East Anderson Street, special use request for onsite consumption of alcohol, file number 23-000867-ZBA. Number eight is a map amendment for 312 East Anderson Street, rezoned from TN1 to TC2, and that's number 23-001036-ZA. And number nine is a special use permit for 2602 Whittaker Street, number 23-000865-ZA, restaurant with alcohol sales. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on those items? Those items are requested to be removed from the final agenda, and I need a motion.
Noah motion to remove items four through nine from the final agenda?
Why would he second?
Do another voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have items to be requested to be withdrawn. We do not have any, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item number 10, approval of the February 7th, 2023 meeting minutes, as well as the approval of the February 28th, 2023 meeting minutes. Need a motion?
Noah motion to approve minutes from February 7th and February 28th, 2023 meeting.
Why would he second?
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business, so we'll go ahead and move into regular business. Oh, sorry. Which is map amendment for West 42nd Street, pin number 2007331009, rezoned from TN2 to TC1, and that's file number 23-001036ZA.
Good morning, Planning-- good afternoon, Planning Commission, Melissa Leto, MPC staff. This item is a map amendment for West 42nd Street. It's a parcel here on the screen that's in the TN2 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the subject parcel from TN2, traditional neighborhood, to the traditional commercial one designation, TC1, with the intent of developing the property in the adjacent parcel, which is right here at 414 West 42nd Street, into an apartment building. It will be a three-story, including 11 units, with associated parking to the rear of the building, and access to the proposed apartment building would be through an access easement facing Montgomery Street. So, the property owner owns West 42nd, 414 West 42nd, and then this small parcel here. They will need to recombine the three parcels, and then they have received an easement agreement with the property owner on 41st, so that they can gain ingress and egress through the access easement off Montgomery Street. Subject property, let's see. The existing building and the building adjacent to the 414 West 42nd are both abandoned buildings that were once used as vehicle repair shops. The applicant intends to demolish both non-contributing buildings. Across the street, over here on the corner at TC1, was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. Proposed apartment building for the rezoning is two buildings being constructed on the corner of Montgomery Street and West 42nd, and this subject apartment building will be sharing pool amenities with the two buildings across the street. There was a neighborhood meeting in relation to the approved two buildings on the corner of Montgomery and 42nd, and it also included this proposed apartment building, and it was hosted on September 20th of last year, whereas 40 to 50 people were in attendance. And so, they included all three buildings, and then were about to submit this third building to HPC, and they realized they had split zoning issues. And so, now they're here to get this one parcel rezoned to TC1. The development pattern in the immediate vicinity of the subject property includes single-family residential, two-family, and approved three-story mixed-use apartment building by the same developer for the subject parcel along West 42nd Street. Transportation and transit, the property would be accessed via an access easement with an entrance from Montgomery Street to the rear of the proposed apartment building. The apartment traffic would have one ingress and egress through the access easement. Transit is available on Montgomery Street, and several transit stops are in the vicinity of the subject property. On-street parking is also very typical in the TN2 and TC1 designations. Through community development, the proposed zoning will allow a development pattern that would be similar to the property across the street, as both proposals would be apartment buildings. The other properties in the immediate vicinity are generally one- and two-family residential uses with some restaurants. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designates the subject property as traditional commercial. The multifamily zoning designation proposed by the applicant is consistent with the future land use map. Going through the zoning ordinance review, whether the range of uses permitted by the proposed zoning district is more suitable than the range of uses that are permitted by the current zoning district, staff states the range of uses permitted under the proposed TC1 zoning is similar to the permitted uses on which is allowed under the current zoning. The applicant is eliminating any non-residential uses in the TC1 for this request for a map amendment. This will ensure the property does not change from the residential, non-residential permitted uses in the TC1 and stay as a residential use. The proposed zoning would allow residential housing inventory to be created, which has been identified as a need in the city of Savannah. The site is located adjacent to TC1 properties and was most recently used as commercial uses. The rezoning will be for neighborhood-oriented multifamily housing, which is limited by the current zoning, as TN2, TC1 allows for higher density per unit than TN2 does, and that's why they are requesting this. The proposed 11-unit apartment building on the subject site would change the residential density and scale of the block. However, the two approved three-story mixed-use apartment buildings across the street from the subject parcel would add a continuity of density and height to the block. The property has reasonable use under the current zoning. The proposed apartment building will include the adjacent parcel, 414 West 42nd Street. In order to construct the 11-unit apartment building with associated parking, it would require both parcels to be in the TC1 designation, due to the development standards allowing for more density, as I mentioned prior. The property could be developed as a single-family residential. However, the apartment building use is permitted in both the TN2 and TC1 zoning districts. Since the applicant is proposing to combine the properties, a split zoning would be abnormal. In summary, the introduction of approximately 11 dwelling units in the form of a three-story apartment building is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Across the street, on the corner of Montgomery Street and West 42nd Street, is an approved development, including two three-story mixed-use buildings. The same developer is requesting to rezone this subject parcel and the adjacent parcel, 414 West 42nd Street, to construct a three-story apartment building without commercial on the first floor, and again, would share pool amenities with the other two buildings. The proposed zoning would allow residential housing inventory to be created, which has been identified as a need in the city of Savannah. The current Comprehensive Plan designation conforms with the existing zoning. What happened there? I just wanted to open up my staff report to show you the conditions of the approval. So, based upon the review criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request with the conditions. One, the subject parcel, which is a pin 2007331009, and then the adjacent parcel, 414 West 42nd Street, and then there is a small parcel behind 414 West 42nd Street with a pin number 2007331004, and they shall all be recombined. And then, the second would be all non-residential uses shall be eliminated from this zoning request. Thank you. I'm here for any questions, as well as Josh Yellen, the agent.
Any questions from the board for staff? If the petitioner will step forward and state their name for the record? You have 20 minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Josh Yellen. As agent for J. Elder Studios, from J. Elder Studios, we have Jerome Elder with us today, who is the project architect. And as Ms. Leto mentioned, we did have a neighborhood meeting for this property in September of last year. At the time, it was brought to the Neighborhood Association as part of a larger development, which encompasses the property directly across the street, which has been approved for two larger three-story multifamily apartment buildings. It was after that meeting when we realized that this site was, in fact, split zoned between the TC1 and TN2, and that we would need to come back for rezoning of the middle parcel on the block. The site currently, and in its previous use, was a non-conforming auto body repair shop. It's both non-conforming and non-contributing, and so, it's been that commercial use in the middle of a mixed-use block for some time. We do agree with staff recommendation. That was for approval of the property, but on the condition that we don't put any commercial uses in the middle of the block. Our intent was always to have this be solely residential, so we are in full agreement with the condition to eliminate the commercial uses here, and also in full agreement that the site should be recombined prior to any development. One point that we did want to point out, because this is a bit of a unique project that we thought we were good to go, then pulled it back for the rezoning, plans have already been, at least preliminarily, submitted to HPC for the COA, for the review. And so, we do want to make clear that those plans were not three stories across the board, that it was actually delineated, so that it was two stories adjacent to the residences, stepping up to three stories as we got closer to Montgomery Street. So, there was some careful consideration and careful planning to ensure that this residential use fits in with the residences immediately adjacent to it. And so, we are thankful for staff's recommendation of approval, and respectfully request that you recommend approval of the same, and we are happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Thank you.
Do have a couple of speaker cards here. Was it Avoni Beavers?
Yvonne.
Yvonne Beavers.
Yes.
No? Okay. Melody Edenfield?
Yes.
All right. Well, if there's no objection, there's no need for rebuttal. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles? Just turn on your mic and say your name.
Lorraine Bowles. What were the results of the community meeting? Any opposition? Any approvals of the project?
Mr. Yellen, were there-- what was the results of the community meeting?
They were favorable, and the Neighborhood Association actually came in support for the larger building. They actually wanted to see more density in an even larger building than we came back with, so it was very much favorable for this project.
Thank you.
Thomas Square Neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Mr. Noah? Do we-- turn on your microphone, please.
I was just asking if the previous cardholders that you had, they seemed to maybe have a question. I was making sure before I made a motion.
No, no. We didn't.
Okay.
Then, open the floor for vote, or open the floor for motion.
Noah, motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Why would he second?
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, so we will go through votes. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Natrica?
Yes.
Mr. Kegler?
Yes.
Mr. Wywitty?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, so motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number 13, rezoning map amendment. Ogici Road rezoned from BC to R3 and BC, file number Z-0223-000360. Mr. Lotson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an item that will be familiar to everyone here. This is a request to rezone property on Ogici Road. Rezoning request was before the Planning Commission on August 16th. The petitioner is requesting to rezone it from the current BC, Community Business Classification, to a combination of R3, which is a multifamily designation, and a remaining a portion of BC on the property, approximately one and a half acres. As I mentioned, it was before you, in August, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and it was forwarded to the County Commission, which denied that petition. The petitioner has waited the requisite six-month time period to be reconsidered, and they're here essentially with the same petition as before. The property in question is highlighted here in front of you, south of Highway 204 and north of Ogici Road. This is a tax map that shows the subject property. It's adjacent with-- it is adjacent to the Coastal Botanical Gardens, which is immediately to the west, and Southwest Middle School, which is immediately to the east. It's approximately 45 acres in size, and the intent is to develop the R3 portion with a multifamily development and maintain a commercial out parcel in the portion that's proposed to remain BC. This is an aerial map that shows the subject property, which is currently vacant undeveloped land. This is a zoning map that shows the existing zoning and zoning of adjacent properties. It's approximately 1,000 feet east of Cambridge Road, but does not have access to any other public rights of way other than Ogici Road. The-- as required by the zoning ordinance, we did provide public notice to adjacent property owners, as well as post the property and publish. We have not-- staff has not had any correspondence from adjoining property owners. Under the proposed use, proposed R3 zoning, permitted uses include single-family, multifamily residential, religious facilities, daycare centers, and other similar uses, but it is primarily a multifamily designation. The proposed BC zoning permits all manner of commercial, retail services. It would include hotels, retail stores, automobile dealers, and similar uses. This will be a similar pattern to existing uses along Highway 17. In the pre-meeting, and really as a part of staff's analysis, some of the overriding issues for this property are the number of proposed units, or the number of units that would be permitted under the zoning, as well as issues around transportation and traffic. The petitioner is proposing in a concept plan that I'll share with you here in just a second, a total of 348 multifamily units and 63 townhomes, for a total of 411 dwelling units. Although that's a large number, the actual density is fairly low. When you compare it to the overall size of the property, it's approximately nine units an acre, a little bit over nine units an acre, which is, from a density standpoint, fairly low, but that's really the relationship between the size of the property at 45 acres and the number of units. One of the-- one of the factors in that, or one of the other points to make about that density is that the property would be about 30 acres, really, of open space. The review criteria suggests that this would be a compatible use from a land use standpoint with the area and adjoining properties. With the current commercial zoning, some significant development could already take place on this property from an intensity standpoint, like I said, which would include grocery stores, and hotels, and restaurants, and auto dealers, and retail. We don't believe that the-- although there are some issues that we want to address through the Development Plan Review, that the proposed zoning is really a lot different than the current zoning from an intensity standpoint. This is a concept plan that the applicant has provided. It has a few unique characteristics. The proposed out parcel is here, at the lower left of the site, and you can see the entry point at this location. The applicant is also proposing, because of the lack of multiple entry points for this property, to construct a firehouse on-site to be operated by Chatham Emergency Services. The large number of units and the size of this property would typically require multiple access points for emergency services, so this, in conversation with Chatham Emergency Services, was a solution to that issue. One of the things that was discussed in the pre-meeting was the emergency access to this site. I think there'll be some discussion amongst the board and the petitioner about what that will mean for the area between the proposed firehouse and the access point onto Highway 17. Generally, in terms of a concept plan, this meets the general development standards as best we can tell at this stage of the review process. A traffic impact analysis will be required, so there could be additional findings associated with that, that the developer of the site will be responsible for. However, the applicant is requesting rezoning only at this stage. To address the transportation and traffic issues, staff has made two conditions at this point in our recommendation, one of which is that an internal vehicular access point between the multifamily development and commercial development be provided along the northern property line of the commercial portion, which is here. The intent of that is to create some internal access for residents here who would not have to go beyond that point in order to access the commercial property. The other condition that you'll see in the staff report is that emergency access shall be reviewed and approved by Chatham Emergency Services prior to final Development Plan approval. Although the applicant apparently intends to develop this property as shown, should the property be rezoned and developed by a different entity, we want to ensure staff as much as we can that a future developer be responsible for these same conditions as we're proposing today. And we are recommending approval with those conditions. The applicant is present as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board for staff? If the petitioner will step forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Harold Yellen, on behalf of the owners of the property and Hill Point, the developers of the site, just a few additional comments to what Marcus has shared with you today. This is a rezoning from what is currently a PBC for the entire site to R3 with a density of 10. Chatham County, as I think you know, their ordinance actually goes up to 40 units an acre for multifamily. We agree with Mr. Lotson, 10 is a very low number, and in fact, you'll even see single-family residential between six and eight. If you do the actual math for our site, we're at 9.02 units per acre, but our ordinance always tells us to round up, so we're really nine, but we're showing you 10. Mr. Lotson also mentioned that in its current condition, there are a host of uses that could go there, and I think he mentioned grocery stores and automobile dealerships. This zoning classification is actually even more intensive. In addition to motels, we could have cocktail lounges, nightclubs, and package stores, and we think that these uses are not compatible with an elementary school and a junior high next door to us. We are fully aware of the challenges of the site, and that's why what you see in front of you is a concept plan. It is not a general plan or a specific plan, and we know that we'll be coming back to you with those details. The other thing that I think makes this petition unique, I've never stood before a group before to tell you that we're not only just donating land, but we're building a fire station on this site in recognition of the uniqueness of this property. And I did not send these in, but I do have a copy of a letter from the Office of Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire, Craig Lantolt. Many of you may have known-- Many of you may have known Craig when he lived here in Savannah, recommending approval of the request based upon the equivalent measure of providing a fire station. We have a similar letter from Mark Revenue, Deputy Commissioner of Safety and Fire. And lastly, there was one letter that I hope came in. Okay, yeah, the one letter that did come in was from Conrad Kearns. He is the Chief Executive Officer of Chatham Emergency Services, where he strongly supports the Hillpoint Development Project. The opportunity for CES to have a new fire station built and titled over to CES. Having fire apparatus in this location will greatly reduce emergency response times to this sector of the county. So that was the one letter that I wanted you all to be aware of, a letter of support. We very much appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We are in agreement with the two conditions which have been raised in the report. With that, we would respectfully request approval and, of course, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Yellen? Yes, Mr. Kegler?
No questions, but as we discussed in our pre-meeting, with the advent of the fire station on-site and with the challenges that we foresee, and I understand this is preliminary plan, but the challenges that we foresee getting out onto O'Geechie Road for emergency vehicles, I think it's the consensus of this board that consideration be given to turn radius for fire truck coming out of the station, and also additional right-of-way for a potential, you know, median lane, center-out lane for emergency vehicles and just in case there's traffic backed up there.
Yeah, we agree with you. We agree with you. We, at this stage, we normally just provide a concept plan in the event that you turn down the rezoning. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. But if this rezoning is done, we will come back with a general plan and a specific plan. We will be working with Chatham Emergency Services to make sure that their trucks can get in and out. Otherwise, there's no use in having a fire station there. So I apologize if the lanes do look narrow, but we have every intention of making this work for Chatham Emergency Services.
And for the residents, want to make sure that if, you know, you know, that time of day in the morning and people going to work and traffic's backed up, I want to make sure that the fire truck can get, can get out there. So if we've got enough right-of-way there that allow for that, that'd be a condition we'd like to add on.
Yes, sir, and we do agree with those comments.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have a question. I don't know if it's for staff.
State your name. State your name, please.
Noah, for the record. Sorry. Is the commercial spot out front, is that a different parcel, or is it all one parcel? Is it, I know we talked about, and this may need to be talked about at the general development plan, not having access to Highway 17. So is this one parcel, or is it two?
Right now, the entire property that you're looking at is a single parcel. They'll be required to subdivide this to create the commercial parcel, because those things are not allowed in the same zoning classification. So the subdivision will be required. In our review of the subdivision, we will, one of the, it's not a condition, but one of the requirements will be that a non-access easement is drawn on the subdivision along the commercial property adjacent to Highway 17, so that would prohibit additional curb cuts on 17 on the commercial property.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Melanie Wilson, Executive Director. In order to ensure that that happens, and Mr. Yellen, the wonderful attorney that he is, didn't come back and say, "This is a separate lot. We have a right to have access," you may want to make a note officially that the subdivision of this property must be connected to the internal access roads for going in and out of the property. I'm just throwing that out. He might have some other solution. He might be able to speak on behalf of his client, but I don't want to, knowing that our concern is access on O'Geechie, be put in a situation where you have to provide access because we're creating a subdivided lot. So sometimes by at least having something as simple as a condition, talking about connecting it to, or using the internal access for egress and regress helps prevent that discussion from taking place when the subdivision occurs.
All right.
So these are the current recommendations in terms of conditions. In case any board member wants to address those or add to them, what have you?
And if it is, of course, the requirement that the property be subdivided, we have no issue with that additional condition either. I think, I think we're required by law to further subdivide, so as a condition, I'm perfectly happy with that additional condition.
Excuse me, I just raise it just to make sure that if somebody else is doing the review, they understand that upon subdivi, upon subdividing the property, that they go to this internal access condition that we have on there, because it's not 100% clear that that, that has to be connected to the internal access, so that's why I raised the issue. With regards to, you know, when it is subdivided, that subdivision will show a connection for, on the, on the northern piece.
All right. Any other questions?
Just for my clarity, are we able to make that a condition of a rezoning? The internal access?
Well, basically, you are conditioning it now. You said an internal vehicular access point between the multifamily development and the commercial development. She'll be provided along the northern property line of the commercial parcel.
Okay.
And all I'm saying is just put, put a note that says "upon subdivision," because it's going to take place when the property is subdivided. Right now, that property's not subdivided, so that's the only reason I raise that issue, is it just adds two words. When it is subdivided, that connection, that those connection points will be shown.
Ms. Jarrett?
Is it worthwhile, this Karen Jarrett, is it worthwhile to add language in here that says that the commercial parcel shall not have access to O'Geechie Road?
I don't, I don't, I don't feel 100% comfortable. I think that we, we have all discussed the not being appropriate to have access, but, you know, looking at the type of road that it is, I think that that'd be really tough. I think the cleanest thing to do would be to make a note, as we've discussed, that so the applicant knows that when this property is subdivided, that access will be through the, the northern property line of the, of the parcel itself. As far as saying no access, I'm just not 100% sure legally. If we could say, Mr. Yellen probably can answer, answer that. I think that once you subdivide a piece of property, they've got a right to access.
Have access, yes.
That's why I'm raising these questions about egress and making sure that it's very clear that this is triggered when the property is subdivided, and that that will be the primary access for this property.
Right. Being that it's one piece of property now.
Right now, that's correct.
And they are proposing a single access, I think a simple condition, because, yeah, they're subdividing it, but it's a single part now.
That's right.
And, and we know about it.
That's right, and that's, that's why, that's why I made the note that we can add just at the end of the first condition that says "upon subdivision," because you want to make sure that that is, that it's known to everybody in case the property gets sold to another developer, that it's very clear, I'm sure Mr. Yellen is going to make sure that they know that, but that it's very clear that the access for, for this property is through the northern portion of the site.
Will the plan come back?
And not on, and not on O'Geechie Road, as far as a primary access.
One other thing I'd like to add is that, just in, from a development review standpoint, additional curb cuts along this frontage would likely not be permitted by county engineering because of the distance between the cuts anyway. And I don't know where they might propose something, but looking at this, there doesn't appear to be enough separation, because there are separation requirements for curb cuts both by GDOT and by county engineering. So I think this property, regardless, is going to have a single access point, and then the internal circulation is really, I think, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Is how you get into the commercial site.
However, when you subdivide a piece of property, you have to show access, and that's why, you know, even though there are distance requirements, which is very true, you've got to be very clear going through this process, which is why I just suggested a tweak to that condition that is saying that that is going to be the, you know, the access is going to be through this, the northern portion of this property, once it's subdivided. It just needs to be clear to everybody that that's what's going to happen, so that you don't end up with somebody buying this piece of parcel, this piece of property that is, that is not part of the overall property and wanting to have an access, access off of O'Geechie Road, and everybody scrambling to figure out how to do that. You know, technically, I think it'd be very difficult for them to get approval, but it doesn't mean that they can't.
Will the site plan come back before this board?
No.
No. So I have a question. It's one piece of land.
That's correct.
And I, I'm sorry if it was in the report. It's all zoned, the B.C. or whatever was on the front little parcel.
That's right.
And they're only rezoning a portion of the property?
They're rezoning the bulk of the property. They're leaving out that small area that you see as B.C.
And you can do that without it being subdivided?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Mr. Noah. You understand where I'm?
Yeah, you can. You don't have to have meet, usually you would have some types of meets and bounds, and I'm sure that the attorney has a drawing of what that description would be, so that if he decides to subdivide it, he probably could do that very quickly. But yes, you can zone, you know, 10 feet by 15 feet if you want to.
And we often do see, Mr. Noah, a condition that says that the commercial property or requirement, a condition be that the commercial piece be subdivided, to which I have no objection at all.
Well, I guess that's where I was going.
Yeah, if you wanted to add a third condition, that the commercial parcel and the multifamily parcel must be subdivided to reflect separate PIN numbers or property identification, I'm perfectly fine with that. The, just also one comment to what Ms. Wilson said, just because property gets subdivided would not entitle it to access on the highway. The Chick-fil-A on Abicorne, you have to come into the entrance of the shopping center. They have no direct access to Abicorne, so it's not unusual that there'll be a subdivided parcel that gets its own access. And as Mr. Lotson said, I cannot even imagine any circumstance where that property gets separate access. They're just too close together. So we are comfortable with adding a subdivision requirement, and if you wanted to add even in that first bullet point, upon the required subdivision of the commercial parcel, and then keep going. We're, we're not trying to come up with one result here and a different result later, but I understand what Ms. Wilson's saying about, let's have a predictable result, and we're, we're all in favor of that.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Then we will open the floor for public comment. We have Chase Rosen online. If you will unmute. Are you there?
Yes, can hear.
You have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Yes, my name's Chase Rosen. I like what Ms. Jarrett is speaking out of, and support this. I think this is a great opportunity for a local development, having a commercial use next to some dense residential right next to two schools. I think that's great. Staff recommended the vehicle access on the northern property line for that commercial property. I would like to see something in place to ensure that there's better pedestrian access as well, be it just a sidewalk or a separate path. I think with the plan to have all of the communities right next door, that would help promote business with what a commercial property is there, as well as making commercial property a better amenity to residents in the community. I would also like to see direct access to the schools if at all possible. I'll note that discussion stayed in place, but I think it would be much safer for, I think it would be more killing for families to move into such a community. I think it would be much safer for children who could walk directly to the school's property rather than having to walk around onto the iPad or have to get in a vehicle and run to be the school bus or the parent's car. And I just want, want to see them trying to walk through regardless, a tree line, a ditch, whatever obstacles remain over a fence. I think that's something that they would try to do. Access towards the adjacent neighborhood, towards Cane Break, I think that would be good too, but I'm sure I'm asking for a little too much at that point. But I, I think promoting mobility here is something that should be amenable to all parties. It would be a bit of a relief for the traffic concerns that you all seem to have. I think it would also help with emergency services in terms of having better options to move in between neighborhoods, between properties. And if this could be made such a requirement, that would make me happy, but I would just love to see even the discussion take place. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rosen.
I'd like to say thank you for the comments. We would love to access through Cane Break if we could. We've been told that the Cane Break residents do not want us to access in that direction. Between now and the time we do come back with our general plan, we will be in touch with the school board. We would love to do something collaboratively with them. We just are not prepared to do that at this time, because this, again, is the zoning, but both points are well taken.
Thank you, Mr. Yellen. Do we have any other public comment? Any board discussion? Then I'll open the floor for a motion.
Joe Urban, motion to approve staff's recommendation with one amendment. I will read the amendment into the record. I approve of the emergency access shall be reviewed and approved by Chatham Emergency Services prior to final development plan approval. My amendment will be as follows. An internal, an internal vehicular access point between the multifamily development and the commercial development shall be provided along the northern property line of the commercial property upon subdivision of the commercial property from the residential.
Bowles, second.
We have a proper motion and a second, so it'll take a vote. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Friendly amendment, by any chance? The additional width of the right-of-way for the emergency access?
That'd be a part of the Chatham Emergency. They have to prove it. That's what that would be.
So we'll continue with the vote.
I want to make, not to belabor it, but that, I understand they're going to prove that, but I want to make sure that the developer know that's the desire, that the additional right-of-way for the emergency lane, that we can add that in.
Is that an amendment?
I believe that, is that proper for the zoning, or is that, would that come with the site plan?
At, at this point in time, if the applicant agrees that he will make whatever it sounded like from, from listening to him do the presentation, that that would be something he would be open to. So without given specific dimensions, then it could, it could just be tweaked where emergency access shall be reviewed and approved by, prior to final development plan approval with the addition of a center line or a center lane or.
Center lane.
Having enough right-of-way for a center lane, something simple. Or, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know. In this case, Harold, you represent the client. The question is, they want to get some assurances that there will be enough right-of-way, because what is shown on the concept plan, as we know, is just that. But they want to make sure that there's enough area that there's a center lane in case there's an emergency that happens and the fire, the fire trucks are coming out when people during a heavily traveled time.
Yeah. Again, it is just a concept plan, and I would, I would invite the county manager to join us when we do sit down with Chatham Emergency Services. That's the best direct route that I can think of. Please join us when we meet with them, and you can give us your input.
And we do have a motion and a second, and we have started voting, so if we could continue back to that, I think, do we need an amendment to the motion, or are we comfortable with that?
We go for that, yeah.
All right, so next, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Natrica?
Yes.
Mr. Kegler?
Yes.
Mr. Ridwyd?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, so the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I like the paper agenda, it's easier, doesn't have to reload. All right, next up, we have presentations, which we have none, other business, which we have none, we are not going into executive session, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Bowles, second.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note for the record that the next meeting will be April the eleventh.
Thank you, next meeting will be April eleventh.
Thank you.